So we're going to open the meeting. We're going to open the July seventeenth meeting of the East Long Metal Planning Board. Can we get one meeting here? Need to announce that under the open meeting law, we are recording this on LCAT. And ask if anyone else here is recording the meeting? Hearing none, proceed. We're going to take two items out of order. First one we're going to take is number ten, request by the applicant for the zoning amendment for Shaker Road. And let me just find this here so I can read this correctly. On behalf of the applicants, John H. Stevens and, John H. and Stephen A. Davis, we are hereby requesting a continuance of the July seventeenth Planning Board meeting scheduled for the proposed zoning amendment at the above referenced site next to the, to the next available meeting anticipated to be held on August twenty first. The continuance is being requested to allow time to review the letter from Town Council. Should you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact our office at your convenience. So I will open the continuation of the hearing and I will entertain a motion to continue it to twenty first at six P M.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, so that one, the zone change at Chestnut and Shaker has been continued to August twenty first. The other one that we have here is the one at the end of Benton, also known as Zero Grove Avenue.
Baldwin.
Uh, Baldwin, no, it's the, it's at the end, at the end of Baldwin Street, but it's Zero Grove Avenue.
Yeah.
Yeah. On behalf of the applicant Baldwin Street LLC, we are hereby requesting a continuance of the July seventeenth Planning Board meeting scheduled for the proposed self-storage facility at the above referenced site to the next available meeting anticipated to be held on August twenty first. This continuance is being requested to allow for additional time to address town comments. Do you have any questions, please do not contact, hesitate to contact our office. Arlo Beck and Associates, Sophia Bistras, Director of Operations. So we'll open the continuation and I'll entertain a motion to continue that one to November twenty, uh, no, August twenty first.
So moved.
Six.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, very good. So those two items, ten and eleven, have been continued and we will not address them tonight. Thank you. Okay. Getting back on the agenda. First thing we have is a site plan waiver request for one sixty-nine Shaker Road, A Wandering Spirit.
Uh, okay, waiver of site plan. Uh, East Long Metal requests for waiver of site plan review. Property owner is Edward Spade, owner's address is seventy-eight Melwood Ave., East Long Metal, Mass. Phone numbers are listed here. Name proposed business is A Wandering Spirit. Owner of business is Wellesley Crouch?
Wesley.
Wesley Crouch, Wesley, thank you. Um, business owner's address is sixty-five Main Street, Hampden, Mass. Property address is one sixty-nine Jacob Road, East Long Metal, Mass. Property district is industrial, it's an allowed use. Proposed hours of operation Monday through Friday, nine to twenty-one hundred. Nine to nine, Saturday nine to five, Sunday nine to twelve. Number of employees, including owner is two. Dataless parking plan is September eighteenth, two thousand and twelve. Summary of business, a retail store which will provide a wide range of products and services to support our customers' unique spiritual needs and path. Uh, the application was signed and dated, uh, June second, two thousand and eighteen.
So, tell us what you're planning on doing.
Well, it's going to be a retail, a medical, I mean, not a physical store, a retail. It's going to sell anything from beads all the way up through candles. It's basically a retail establishment. Um, we're going to have a, quite a large internet access lounge where people can just come and relax. Eventually, we'd like to, um, have a juice or protein bar with how presumably. We're not going to get into fresh foods or inclusion of that nature, but maybe some packaged foods. We already talked to Board Health about that. They've agreed with the plan, you know, how we want to phase it in and how we want to approach it. It's basically what we're going to be doing. So if you can run some beer classes, you know, um, you know, paint and sip classes and things like that. It's going to be a pretty unique combination of different things.
I understand you've acquired a beer and wine license for on purposes. Can you tell us how that fits in with this?
Yeah, the way this is going to work is alluded to the paint and sips, yoga and sips, um, things like that and the development of various ways to enhance these senses ability to grow. So it's not going to be a belly up type of bar where we serve liquor and anything like that. And you can see by the hours, we're closing at nine o'clock, you know, Saturday night. So it's not going to be a drinking establishment whatsoever. So it'll just fit in with their repertoire, what we need to do. So if someone comes in, wants to relax here, have a glass of wine, and then we wait for a glass or after a particular glass, that everything.
I have an issue with that because in this town, um, up to this point, the only place that alcohol is served, whether beer and wine or a full bar, is in restaurants. This would be the first time that this use was being proposed. And the use is not mentioned in the zoning bylaw. So we have a clause in there that says any use that's not listed is not allowed. So this, this use of auxiliary, um, serving of, of beer and wine would, in my interpretation, not be allowed under the bylaw. I look at it the same way, I look at the bowling alley across the street, okay? They have a restaurant quote unquote in there that serves some basic food and they serve beer and wine, okay? Their main purpose is, um, is bowling, not, not drinking. But we have them under special permit as a restaurant because the food and wine situation. So one possibility here would be to treat you the same way and put you under special permit. You know, the other, the other thing would be to call it not an allowed use. And the reason I'm concerned about this is not so much your particular application, but there are, it would set a precedent and there are a fair number of places around town that would probably like to have ancillary service of beer and wine to whatever they do, whether it be a gym or a health club or another, uh, spiritual type place, of which there were several in town, um, that teach some of the same things that you've talked about, teaching yoga, Reiki, or whatever you pronounce it, and so on. So, um.
How would you pursue allowed use?
Well, we, we could modify the bylaw to include that. If we did, we'd probably, I would probably recommend that that be done under special permit as well. Okay?
How would I do that?
How would you do that? You'd go to the Town Council and petition them to consider a zone change. They would then refer it to us, we would hold a public hearing and decide whether or not, not we want to recommend that the bylaw be changed, then we'd go back to Town Council and they would have to vote on it, okay? As, just as any other legislation. Uh, the other concern I have is that you made some modifications to the building, including adding an additional entryway, say, no?
No. No, there's no structural changes to the building.
I think that's your building.
Connie, was there a question of that?
Not on this.
Not on this one?
Another application.
Okay.
No, this is just four foot walls, partitions.
But you had recommended that we, we require a site plan on this one? Did you not?
I believe there was a site plan.
There was, yeah.
But we haven't seen it, so.
Well, it was on our file.
It didn't. So when we, when we receive applications, they have to be complete and all. So if you have a site plan, that should have been presented with the application.
This is the last site plan we have, it just gives us seventeen spots.
Okay, so for that, we would need to, we, to do a site plan review. You're requesting here is a waiver of site plan review. So as a first step, I would recommend to the board that we not waive the site plan. That we hold, at least, at a minimum, we hold a site plan review.
Well, he hasn't really done, he hasn't made any changes. He meets the parking requirements under our table of uses and our bylaws, so. It is a change of use because it was formerly a gym and now it's becoming more of a holistic center. But under our, and I ask you to please look at the comments, the email from, which is attached from our building inspector, building commissioner, code enforcement officer, pick your title, that is the hat he wears. He does recap and he does provide reasons why he feels the applicant does not have to come for site plan and is also allowed to have this beer and wine service as an accessory use to the main use of the retail business. So those are his comments and it's.
So George, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So just, how is painting with a twist handled?
They are a BYOB, they are not selling alcohol.
I don't think you allow that anymore in Town East Long Metal.
I don't know what, but that business is even still there. But it was allowed by, at the time, as a BYOB.
Right, I think, yeah, I think the town, whoever it is, can't pass the rule saying that they're not going to do any more of those.
I, I don't know who would have passed it, it wasn't us.
Okay, well.
Probably Town, the Town Council would, they have liquor permits licenses under their purview, not the planning board.
Right, but that, that didn't require a license because it was a BYOB.
Correct, but if there was a change to that stipulation, I think it may have gone to Town Council versus the Planning Board, um, for consideration. Do you want to repeat this?
Yeah, read, read it in.
Okay. Uh, this is from Kevin Duquette, Building Commissioner. Connie, just an overall recap of the proposed business to be located in one sixty-nine Shaker Road, A Wandering Spirit. Planned use is a mix of retail shop with the selling of mercantile goods and offerings of a business, office-type use for meditation and relaxation. Number two, retail use is an allowed use in industrial district as shown in Table three dash one, section three dot zero seven zero, and any use is allowed in industrial district as long as it is not commonly considered hazardous or noxious per Table three dash one, section three point zero eight zero. Under zoning bylaw, section seven point one, building inspectors duties, if is under my jur, if it's under my jurisdiction and authority to classify all provisions and allow uses of the bylaws. The applicant has since applied for an open premise beer and wine license. This beer and wine service would be an accessory use to the main use of the retail business. The definition of a tavern can be found in the zoning bylaws in page eight dash fourteen, which states tavern can establish use primarily for serving of liquor to the general public and where food may be served or sold only as an accessory to the primary use. If the applicant chooses to serve beer and wine, that service would not classify this ta, facility as a tavern. Primary use is a place of business and retail shop for the selling of goods.
I'll take it to the board. Do you feel not?
I'm generally in favor of it. We have a vacant building, it's really kind of a limited use. It sounds like you're only going to be utilizing the beer and wine when you're doing classes. So someone just can't walk in and be served alcohol.
Nope, that's not what we're doing.
So I, I'm comfortable with that.
Aye?
Uh, I agree with what Russ said.
I feel the same way.
So I would make a motion, if you're ready.
Sure.
So I would make a motion to, uh, to waive the site plan requirement for one sixty-nine Shaker Road, A Wandering Spirit.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
You got it? Good luck with your business.
Good luck.
Next one, we have Crowned With Beauty.
Our request for waiver of site plan review, Zola Equities LLC. Owner's address is seven eighteen Lakeview Circle. Tennessee? Is this your handwriting?
No, it's probably that owner's, Tennessee.
Hey, I, I, I can't read some of the handwriting, that's the problem I'm dealing with here. Owner's, uh, telephone's name, uh, telephone number's here. Uh, name proposed business is Crowned With Beauty. Uh, owner of business is Emily De.
Deceazer.
Deceazer, thank you. Uh, business owner's address is twenty-eight Gilman Street, Springfield, Mass. Property address is five seven six North Main Street, East Long Metal. Property district is business, it's an allowed use. Proposed hours of operation are seven A M. to seven P M. Tuesday through Saturday. Number of employees, including the owner, is one. Summary of, uh, of business is lash and makeup bar. The application has been signed and dated May third, two thousand and eighteen.
So this is an allowed use in the zone? Have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
George, do you want to just make a general announcement? By the way, this lady came in some time ago and because of our timeline and our deadlines and such, some of the paperwork didn't quite get where it needed to be. But thank you, you, you helped a lot. Thank you.
I want to just announce, those who came in late, that items ten and eleven have been continued, okay? They've been continued to August twenty first, will not be acted on tonight.
Well, you're right, huh?
Okay, next, uh, require, uh, waiver for site plan review. Property owner is Scott and Johanna Trainer, nineteen Colony Drive. Phone numbers are listed here. Name proposed business is Scott Trainer, ferrier service. Owner of business is Scott Trainer. Business owner's address is nineteen Colony Drive. Property address is nineteen Colony Drive. Property district is residential A, uh, it's an allowed use. Proposed opera, hours of operation are not applicable. Number of employees, including the owner, is one. Uh, summary of business is mobile, ferrier, ferrier service. The application has been signed and dated June fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
So you go around and chew horses?
Yes, sir.
Very good. Uh, mentioned you have one commercial vehicle?
Yes.
What, what is that?
Toyota Tundra pickup.
Okay, and that fits in your garage?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Because the, the only requirement really is that that be in a garage or screened.
Mm-hmm.
So it's home office, basically? Do you have a motion?
Move to waive the site plan requirement.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, very good.
Wonderful. Excellent.
Thank you.
Uh, next, we have a request for waiver of site plan review, um.
Voyageen. Voyageen.
Uh, and Voyageen Trust. Uh, owner's address is forty-nine Edgewood Ave., Long Metal. Phone numbers are listed here. Name proposed business is Voyageen Remodeling. Uh, owner of business is David Voyageen. Uh, business owner's address is forty-nine Edgewood Ave., Long Metal. Property address is ten Crane Ave., East Long Metal. Property district is business. Proposed hours of operation are, they're flexible, but it's basically four to six hours a day. Uh, number of employees, including the owner, is one. Summary of business is coordinating residential remodels. All physical work is done off-site. The application's been signed and dated June nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
So this is going to be in the old Hope Lumber office, basically?
No.
No?
I own the building on ten Crane Ave.
Oh, ten, you do it.
It's right behind Stephen Stuhlers.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay, that one.
Yeah.
Got it?
Okay.
Okay, so it's allowed use in the, in the zone?
Yeah.
All those in favor? Well, first of all, motion?
I'll make a motion to, uh, to waive the site plan requirement for ten Crane Ave.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Excuse me, you have to release Dave Voyageen, I am. David, you used to work at Monsanto? Yeah?
No.
Okay.
No.
Contact you Thursday.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Okay, this one, forty-four.
Hey, we have another waiver here.
Yes, this is the one.
All right, we have a, oh, I, I mean, could you do it for me?
No, good, ready?
Uh, waiver of site plan review. Property owner is East Long Metal Center Village LLP. Owner's address is forty, Island Pond Road, Springfield, Mass. Phone numbers are listed here. Name proposed business is Chipotle Mexican Grill. Owner of business is Steve Ellis, founder, executive chairman, Cameron McVane, uh, real estate manager. Business owner's address is ten Queen Anne Lane, Ingle, Mass. Property address is forty-two Center Square, East Long Metal, Mass. It is an allowed use. Proposed hours of operation are ten forty-five A M. to ten P M. I'm assuming that's every day, but it's not listed here. Uh, number of employees, including the owner, is between twenty and twenty-five. Dataless parking plan with copy the same as November twenty-seventh, two thousand and seventeen. Summary of business, please see attached narrative. I'll go to that in a minute. Number of commercial vehicles is non-applicable. The application was signed and dated, uh, June twentieth, two thousand and eighteen. And I will read the summary of the, oh, wow, okay.
Can you condense it and say it's a Chipotle restaurant?
It's a Chipotle restaurant, it's typically served nationwide. I think that's probably the best way to describe it.
Yeah.
This, this gives me the whole history of the restaurant, which I don't think we need right now.
And then could you read the, um, letter from D P W?
Then we have a letter here from the D P W, um, from Thomas Christensen, um, to the Planning Board. East Long Metal Department of Public Works offers the following comment on the above referenced project. It is a recommendation of the Department of Public Works that a waiver for site plan review not be granted due to proposed alter, alterations to the existing structure. Please let me know if you have any additional questions or require any further additional information. Yours respectfully, Thomas D. Christensen, Deputy Superintendent, Department of Public Works.
And I'd add to that, under the zoning determination that we got from, um, Kevin Duquette, Building Commissioner, is that he says that uses would be approved pending a site plan and special permit. So his recommendation is that we do a site plan as well.
When we're ready to, are you, are you ready for comments from the board?
Um, you may want to read Kevin's thing into.
Okay, thank you. Dear Connie, after review of the submitted application documents, there are a few things of concern. Number one, the submitted drawings in the package reference forty Center Square and the applicant states forty-two Center Square. Maybe we can confirm the correct address. Number two, the submitted drawings show a new exterior entry door to be installed on the left elevation of the building. The past approved special permit did not have this entry door. Number three, the submitted drawings show signage for the business on the building. Uh, a zoning determination would be, would need to be submitted for signage approval prior to installation. Number four, more of an F Y U. under state of mass, state building code seven eighty, C M R, chapter three, use and occupancy three point oh three dot one dot one. Small buildings and tenant space states, a building or tenant space used for assembly with an occupant load of less than fifty persons shall be classified as a group B business occupancy. With a proposed occupant, uh, occupant load of forty-six for Chipotle, the mass state building code will classify this establishment as a place of business and not a restaurant where applicants for permits are submitted for code regulations. Regards, Kevin Duquette.
So you want to tell us a little bit about your plan?
Yeah, I'm John Droste, I'm with Fitzgerald Attorneys at Law, and here with Philippe Crav, uh, Cravo from, uh, from, um, Levesque. And we also have Kathy McVane from Chipotle and Rocco Falconi from, uh, East Long Metal Center Village. So, uh, this project has been up for a while, as you know, and this was a former Sleepy's location that they, they, they gave some spa, space away. You guys had approved a Five Guys last year and, uh, that, that fell through, but Chipotle has come in, um, to, uh, to, uh, propose a, a new restaurant at that location. So, um, I don't know if we can have, uh, Philippe, explain a little bit what's going on and, um, you know, we can address the, the, the site plan questions later, if you want.
Sure, so just as an overview of the project, this is in the town center there, right behind the town offices. Uh, it's in the exact same location that was previously proposed as Five Guys. Same interior space, um, all parking counts and regulations are, are identical. There's no, um, parking lot improvements, exterior improvements to the parking lot, all parking lot. Features will remain the same, it's essentially just the, changing the tenant of the space within that formerly mattress firm or Sleepy's, whatever, uh, the, whatever was there. Uh, they sort of, you know, chopped off twenty-five hundred, about twenty-five hundred square feet there to, uh, for the new restaurant. And that's essentially, that's, that's essentially the only difference is.
Questions from the board?
With the exception of the addition of a door, what else changes on the site plan?
Nothing.
And I can just speak to the, the addition of the door. Um, I can't speak to how Five Guys is a permitting, but it's fifty occupants, requires a second door. That can be interpreted as fifty seats or include the people that are standing in line. So we usually interpret worst case, just so that we're on the safe side, which is why we put in a second door. Um, and I'm, you know, I'm not sure how East Long Metal would classify it, um, but that's why we added a second door, purely to meet code for eager requirements. It can be removed just as easily if it's not required.
The, the only issue here is that, um, we have, when we have a site plan, it's supposed to represent what's actually there. And if the exterior of the building is altered by adding another entrance, then the site plan doesn't reflect the actual conditions. So we, we need a new site plan, at least for that part of the, of the, the project, okay? Uh, I, I don't see any problem with it getting approved once it's submitted, but we, we have to have the plan so we know, you know.
Johnny, have the, the plan or?
Well, we, we'd have to hold.
It has to be a new submission.
It has to be a new submission for a site plan review.
Now.
Is it confirmed we need the door? I mean, Five Guys didn't have the door, so.
We don't, we don't tell you what, how many doors you need.
Well, well, sort of.
Speaking of Five Guys getting approved.
That, that, that's up to the building, uh, commissioner.
Which is sort of interesting with the, the building inspector, um, because I've, I, would, would you, the letter that he had written talked about the, the, the C M R and the code and being, uh, a class B building as opposed to a class A building. And I, I think with Chipotle's architects, when they put it together, they reviewed it as a class A because of the people, that it's more than fifty because they're standing in line. So it looks as though the interpretation of the building inspector, that's a class B where you don't need, you know, since there's only four, there's less than fifty seats.
But that's something you need to resolve with the building commissioner, okay?
Right.
We, we really rely on, on his determination there, so.
But I, but I guess the other question that we look at is this, you know, when you look at the, the section, I believe it's section seven point one, uh, um, let me just find it right here. Uh, section seven point four one, it talks about the requirements for site plan review and then there's one paragraph that talks about the waiver and what do you need? And, you know, it, it says that there's no substantial change.
Yeah.
And, you know, I don't know if adding a door is a substantial change.
It's a change to the exterior of the building, so, yeah.
We would argue, excuse me, Rockwell balcony representing East Long Metal Center Village, we would argue that this is a minor change in the site plan and is put in for safety based on the tenants' recommendation of doing several restaurants. And we'd like to get them in as quickly as possible. And we know that delays can cause problems with other restaurants, that's why they're not here.
Yeah, we, we understand that.
Can I suggest something?
Yeah.
So could we do an approval contingent upon the building inspector receiving the appropriate updated plan?
Yeah, we can do that.
How's that, how long is it going to take to update the plan?
This, this one does not, no.
So I guess if we speak to the, we may not even need to update the plan if he says we don't need a second door, which his comment seems to say we don't need a second door, so then we're fine.
Because I, I think we vetted out the concept of a restaurant.
Yeah.
I know I did.
Yeah.
Uh, at our last session with, uh, with Five Guys. So I, I think it's. So I, I think it's, I'm glad it's being filled. It's, it's wonderful. So I would make a motion.
If I may before you make the motion. So in, I'm speaking with my colleague in the DPW in regard to this door. It does modify this, the site plan additionally because you'd have to create an entryway. You'd have to put a concrete sidewalk in along with the proper incline for ADA compliance.
I think ADA is in the front, and only one entrance is required to.
This was, this was just something he was talking, you know, he was, because of the nature of the, the pedestrian pathway in that particular site plan, so there were other concerns that were raised by DPW. And it would also involve some landscaping, because right now you are opening a door onto what is a landscaped area, and as an emergency ingress or egress, would, would the town, building, town's building commissioner allow people to come in and out onto the area that's landscaped for emergency? So I would.
Yeah, I guess if we don't need the door.
If you don't need the door.
Then it's, I'm not sure if we do need the door, then we would need to present the plans showing that door.
So it's up to you to decide what you want to do, if you want to waive the site plan this evening, or?
I, I think, well, let's get a motion first, then we can discuss the motion.
So I'll make a motion to waive the site plan requirement for forty-two Center Square, East Long Metal Center Village, contingent upon the plan being approved by the East Long Metal Building Inspector, zoning enforcement officer. Because he, just, so just to add to it.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
You get, you, let's get the motion seconded.
Second.
Okay, now, discuss.
You can't get an occupancy permit if, from him, if everything's not in order anyway, correct?
Oh, gosh, yes.
So.
Yeah. I, I pretty much agree with that, that if, if they do decide to put a door in, they can submit the new site plan with what's necessary. If they decide they don't need the door, then they don't need the site plan, okay? And if the door's already in, they decide to take it out, then they don't need the site plan. I'm not an expert on how many doors you need for how many people, that's up to the building commissioner to decide. If, if in the end it's different from what it is today, then we can approve a site plan at that point. I don't think it's necessary to hold it up for that reason. Any other comments, Ty?
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And then we'll be taking up your special permit leader tonight.
As we wait as we have it all up.
Can we, can we take this out of order, Connie?
Absolutely.
Okay, let's take this out of order so that we.
When should the Chipotle open if it, if everything goes the way it should?
We'd like to open for the other years, so it will be open around holidays.
Great.
So you want a motion to take the agenda out of order, just for formality?
Do I have a motion to take the agenda out of order and take up number, number twelve next?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, we'll open the public hearing on the request for, by an applicant for a special permit to reflect a change in tenancy occupying the space located at forty-two Center Square, East Long Metal, Mass, in the business zoning district to a Chipotle Mexican Grill, the applicant being East Long Metal Center Village LLP.
The East Long Metal Planning Board will hold a public hearing on July seventeenth, two thousand eighteen, at six o'clock, in the East Long Metal School Committee Conference Room located, East Long Metal High School, one eighty Maple Street, East Long Metal, Mass, to consider a special permit amendment case SP two thousand seventeen dash ten by East Long Metal Center Village LLP to update the tenant occupancy, the space located at forty-two Center Square, East Long Metal, Mass, to be a Chipotle Mexican Grill, assesses parcel ID twenty-seven dash one eighty-two dash eighteen in the business, business zoning district. Information regarding to this application that filed for public inspection at the East Long Metal Planning Board's office located at Town Hall sixty Center Square is available for review by the public during regular business hours, eight AM to four PM Monday through Friday.
Okay. So you've told us what you're doing. The, the change here to the special permit is what? You've got a thick, thick package here, along with the site plan.
I can summarize if you.
If you could summarize it, yeah.
So this special permit was granted because the former use was for a retail establishment. So in order to change of you, to change the, change the use to a restaurant, special permit had to be issued for the restaurant. So when the previous applicant withdrew his application, you were left with a special permit that had never been fulfilled or utilized. In review of the special permits that were issued, or the special permit that was issued, there was some conflicting information, there were some folk, there were some staff members who had come and gone. So in order to clean it up, if we could rescind the special permit, we would, and we would start fresh, but that's, we can't rescind the special permit, and we don't want to revoke it because that sounds too harsh. So what we're going to do is we're going to clean it up so that it is for restaurant use, and in the event that Chipotle should leave us, you won't have to go through this again. It will be a special permit for a restaurant. So that's what we're going to do.
Okay, so we're amending this to have that be a restaurant, and with the, with the hours of operation as presented?
In the application.
Right.
I will present a draft decision for you to review. But again, it's going to make it less complicated, because in reading through that, it, it just wasn't clean, it wasn't clear, it wasn't concise.
Okay, so we're rewriting it to make it right. Any further discussion from the board? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve the special permit? What? Yes, it is. Oh, yep, right, I'm sorry. Do we have any que, any comments or questions from the audience, from the public? Hearing none, I take it back to the board. Do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Do I have a motion to approve the amendment to the special permit?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
Thank you.
Forward to eating there. Okay. Moving right along. Back in quarter.
Okay, one forty-three Shaker Road. Request for waiver of site plan review. Property owner is Dan Burek. Owner's address is one forty-three Shaker Road. Address, P O box number is listed here, East Long Metal, Mass. Phone numbers are listed here. Name of proposed business is Michelle Murray.
LMHC.
What is it?
LFHC.
LMHC, thank you very much. Owner of business is Michelle Murray. Business owner's address is seventy-six Bronson Terrace Springfield, Mass. Property address is one forty-three C Shaker Road, Suite two oh three, East Long Metal, Mass. Property district is industrial, so allowed use. Proposed hours of operation are by appointment between the hours of eight AM and eight PM Monday through Friday. Number of employees, including the owner, is one. Summary of business operation is private psychotherapy practice, seeing individual adults on an hourly basis, occupy one small office with shared waiting room and restrooms. The application has been signed and dated June twenty-first, two thousand eighteen.
This isn't allowed use in Danny Burek's complex in his own? Do I have a motion? Any discussion from the board? Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Good luck.
And Miss Murray also was probably spending a little more time than she could have been spending completing the paperwork, so we're very appreciative of her patience.
Thank you, dear.
Okay, we have sign permits.
Okay. Town of East Long Metal, application signed permit dated May thirty-first, two thousand eighteen. Business name and address is King Covenant.
Yes.
Financial, sixty-nine Maple Street, East Long Metal. Prop, business owner's name and address is Harold King, sixty-nine Maple Street, East Long Metal, Mass. Property owner's name is, address is Mike Boucher?
Boucher.
Boucher, sixty-five Maple Street, East Long Metal, Mass. Phone num, contact person is Harold King, phone number is listed here. Square footage of a proposed sign is twenty point oh nine square feet. Free standing, no. Height above the ground is seven feet. Attached to the building, yes. Projections, if any, is not applicable. Setback from the property line is twenty-six feet. Distance to the nearest side yard is forty feet. Distance to the top of sign above vertical wall is two feet. The permanent sign is non-illuminated. Number of existing signs is zero. Number of proposed signs is one. Total square footage of proposed sign is twelve point oh nine square feet. Total square footage proposed and existing signs is twelve point oh nine square feet. The application's been signed. The estimated cost is one thousand three hundred dollars, and a sign affidavit is attached.
The other thing I find weird is, it says it's above the roof, but it's.
Well, below the roof.
Yeah, it's underneath the soffit.
Yes, so.
So it's below the roof.
Below the roof. Okay, so it, the distance above the vertical wall, two feet, doesn't really apply. Other than that, it looks good. The building commissioner has, has approved this one?
Yeah, yes, he has. He points out five point eight signs, paragraph D, all signs requiring building permits in all districts must be approved in writing by the planning board prior, before a building permit may be issued.
Yeah, no, I understand that.
So.
But it, it meets zoning requirements, so, okay. Is it, is this going in with the, there's another financial business in.
The confidence, yeah, CPAs.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. A motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good to go.
Thank you.
We have sign permits for one.
Next, we have another one. Town of East Long Metal, signed permit application dated June fourteenth, two thousand eighteen. Business name and address is Wondering Spirit LLC, one sixty-nine Shaker Road, Unit One, East Long Metal, Mass. Business owner's name and address is Wesley Crouch, sixty-five Main Street, Hampden, Mass. Property owner's name and address is Spade seventy-eight Maplewood Ave, East Long Metal, Mass. Contact person telephone number is Wesley Crouch. Phone number is listed here. Square footage area proposed sign is ninety-nine. Free standing, no. Attached to the building is yes. Setback from the property line is fifty feet. Sign is permanent, it is non-illuminated. Number of existing signs is zero. To, number of proposed signs is one. Total square footage of proposed sign is ninety-nine. Total square footage proposed and existing signs is ninety-nine. The applicant, sign, oh, the sign vendor is Sign Techniques Inc., three oh one Chickaby Street, Chickaby, Mass. The application has been signed, the estimated cost is one thousand eight hundred dollars. A sign affidavit is attached.
Okay, looks good. Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good to go. When do you expect to open?
I think you want to.
Hold it, sir. Sir.
Was that your name, miss?
What?
Four zero?
Okay, the next item of business is a continuation of a public hearing for Hidden Ponds Estates. We'll open up the continuation now. Start out with the board. First of all, Ms. Browders, do we have a ruling from the DPW on the sewer issue?
Yes, sir, we do. And that should be when you have kids, if you have kids. Here, here's the letter.
Okay, thank you. Dear Ms. Browders, the East Long Metal Department of Public Works offers the following comments on the above referenced project. Number one, the existing sewer main on Redstone Drive is more than adequately sized to handle the additional sewer, sewage from the proposed subdivision. Number two, the proposed sidewalk throughout the subdivision shall be of concrete construction, and the construction details should be revised accordingly. Number three, the DPW recommends that prior to commencement of construction, design for the proposed pump station be reviewed and approved by the DPW, and that a condition of approval be in the place of that, in place to, to that fact. Please let me know if you have any additional questions. Yours respectfully, Thomas Christensen, Deputy Superintendent, Department of Public Works.
Okay, any additional questions from the board? John?
Not much. I just, I still have my concerns about the traffic and some of the stormwater issues. Just because the idea of having twenty new houses is obviously going to have a large effect on Elm Street, and evident of days like these, I just worry about things like stormwater. And so I'm sympathetic to some of the, those concerns. So those are two of my concerns, but I'm happy that the, this got, this got resolved, the sewage issue has gotten resolved.
Russ?
The DPW letter has cleared up my concerns.
Okay, mine likewise. Point, we'll open it up to the public, if anyone has anything to add from, to the testimony that was, at the last several sessions of this? Please.
Yeah, my name is Bob Dean Ram, just as, as a potential buyer.
Your, your address?
In Springfield, Mass.
Okay.
Excuse me, sir, please spell your last name.
D E, capital M A R I A.
And you signed it?
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, as a potential buyer, this area is a nice, nice area up there. As you get older, I'm retired, as I get older, you live for places within five minutes of things. This is a nice little area where it's close to a lot of places, as you get older, you can go to. Take your grandkids to the park or something like that. It's a one-way area. Anybody going in there is going to be going just to see that place, you have to live there, not to go in, so. I hope it's positive, it's a really nice place over there. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to add any testimony at this point? Hearing none?
I, I just have a question for the board.
Please.
I, I sent an email.
Again, identify yourself.
My name is Al Joyce with Rosebud Realty about Nottingham Drive, East Long Metal. And I'm, I'm not quite, when I read the, the rules, I'm not quite sure how many members are required to vote yes to get a subdivision approved.
We, we need a super majority, so we need all four of us to vote.
And then, my question is, because it, Connie had mentioned she didn't know how many people of the board were going up. I was hoping to have, to have everyone have the opportunity to vote. Is there any kind of a procedure where you could begin of the vote tonight and continue it?
No, there is not.
All right.
There is not. We would, we would, that would go against all kinds of open meeting laws and everything else.
I've been, I'm not surprised.
So, no, we couldn't do that, but we, we can, we can vote and see if.
We have a question.
What, I'm, I'm still talking to this guy.
Oh, sorry, sorry.
Sorry, Mr. Joyce. We can vote tonight and see whether four of us will approve it. We can wait for Mr. Morabito to be here, so we have five people, and we only need four votes. Again, Mr. Morabito will have to review anything that's said tonight on the tape, so that he's aware of what, what went on here, because he's not here tonight. So, I have another question or comment from the floor.
A point of information.
Yeah.
The subdivision rules and regulations of the town only require a simple majority.
Oh, they do, okay. Thank you.
I can't cite the section, but I read it, yes.
Okay, thank you.
But if I may.
Yep.
At the, we have an opinion from the Attorney General that says it must be a super majority. Attorney Levine.
I can't hear you.
So we have an opinion from the Attorney General's office, from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and subdivision approval must be a super majority. Attorney Levine.
That's not what our rules and rights say. I can just get the side to give me a moment.
I, I read the same rules also. It's in the rules, it does say just a majority. It's in the rules, it does say just a majority.
And the question then becomes, do our rules, um, override the, uh, state ruling? And I believe our town attorney is here? Or was he here?
I am Kevin Mann, town attorney. I'm not familiar with the AG's ruling in that regard, so I got to, I think, look at that. Supersedes or not, and the language I ruled.
I don't have a, I'm just getting ready. I just know what I've been told. If you can point out, I mean, within the subdivision regulations, where we don't require a super majority for a five-member board?
I could probably dig it up real quickly here.
Mister Chairman?
Yeah.
This has always been the rule for the planning board.
Right. Page seventeen.
I don't have my subdivision, I had too much to carry tonight.
Here we go. Board action. That's the A and R.
Did you say you had it handy, Attorney Levine?
May I approach?
Please.
Let me tell you about page thirty-six.
Okay.
If my brain is still working.
I bet it is.
No, it's late.
Veritable action shall require a majority vote of the board members. That's section five point seven point two on page thirty-seven. And not having the Attorney General's ruling in hand, I think we have to go by what our regulations say. Because the Attorney General's never challenged our regulations. So, is there any other comments from the public? Please. If you can speak to the microphone.
I'm Alice Woodmore, and I live behind the pond that's being proposed, and I'm wondering how, since the property at the end of Dearborn Street has one of those settling ponds that never dries out, how is the bigger one in my backyard going to be handled? I was told that it would only be a trickle that's going to run into my backyard. And if you look at the diagrams, it's a twelve-inch diameter pipe, which leads me to believe that that's going to be a lot of water at some time that's going to run into the easement in my backyard. I am being washed away as it is with the few houses that are being, that were built by KV, and now you want to put more houses. There's no reason why that road has to come where it is. I'm sure these people, when they bought the property, must have had an alternative road that they would have used in case you rejected this one. And it does appear to me through the years that they, that they used a road that was similar in, um, in height to the one that they're proposing. While my backyard is low, they could very well easily put another house there with a walkout basement or some other use.
Thank you.
I, I can comment, isn't that, that's actually the, the same question we had at the last meeting. And that by, by law, we, we could, we could design a system that absolutely eliminated any water flow to that area, but that's not allowed. What we're required to do is design a system that maintains the same water flow. We can't decrease it and we can't increase it. And there's, the, the engineers do a very thorough job in designing it, and then, um, I'm required to hire an ex, an outside expert that's selected by DPW to review those, uh, engineering studies. And there won't be, there won't be any more water, and, uh, and the, this, the hearing question is a wetlands. Wetlands get wet. When it rains heavy, they get more wet. Uh, but there won't be any more and there won't be any less water going through that easement.
Excuse me, ma'am. He, he's answering your question? Okay, if you want to get up-
I'm complete.
If you want to get up and, and speak again, you're welcome to do that. But speak to the board, please.
When the water is flowing on a road, it's all flowing in one direction, so it can't be a natural thing that was flowing the way it was before the road was put in. We're going to get a lot more water off of the road than what it is now.
And that is why the basin is there, to deal with the change in flow and make sure that what flows off the property after construction is the same as flows off the property now.
But the basin is never going to drain. It has never drained at the far end, so how is it going to drain here?
This is, uh-
Even the property that I-
Excuse me, ma'am, this is not designed the way Dearborn Avenue was designed. This is a new design, and it will function as designed. Thank you.
Well, I've been given a few different stories on how this property is going to be handled, and it's not the same that is printed here in the book. They are going to cut the trees down and they are going to take the grass out, and then they're going to have to put in a different settling, uh, different types of gravel and that sort of thing. So it's not really going to be as it originally was.
No, it's going to be new.
Furthermore, it's a twelve-inch pipe that's going to drain into my backyard. It's not the trickle, trickle that I was told it was going to be.
Can I, uh, let me ask the engineer to address the size of the pipe, why it's that size, and what kind of float to be expected?
Absolutely. So, the, the basin in question would be the surface infiltration basin down at the corner of the property here. And that basin was designed-
Can we do this, can we do it in English?
Yes, sure.
For everyone's pleasure.
So the, so there's an outlet control structure. This, these basins are designed to have an emergency overflow. This basin is an infiltrate, designed as an infiltration basin, so most storm events will be contained within the basin and infiltrated into the ground. If there, there's separation to groundwater, there's all these requirements that we had to meet.
Layperson, layperson.
The water entering the basin will stay there. Only larger storm events will make it their way out of the basin, and it won't be a twelve-inch pipe full of water gushing water out. It will be, at that point, just, you know, whatever's coming out of that pipe. It's not a twelve-inch full pipe of water gushing out of the basin.
Okay, thank you. Take it back to the board. Any additional questions or comments?
I've noted my concerns.
Okay. We've heard from the public, we've heard from the board, we, I, as far as I can tell, we don't need any additional information. I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
It's moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Can we close the public hearing? It means we will not take any more testimony. We can then debate the application and take a vote on it. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Four, nothing. Okay, we have a subdivision plan here that we've been working on for quite some time. Uh, we've gone through a number of revisions on it. Uh, any further discussion? Anyone wants to bring up at this time? If not, I'll entertain a motion to-
Just, just, just to kind of do a quick recap.
Yeah.
So, we've had three or four different public hearings on it, which has been well attended, and appreciate all the comments. I think a number of the concerns that were raised by the public and by this board have been addressed by town officials. I mean, specifically, there was a question about the, the capacity of the sewer line to handle the twenty different homes, and we heard tonight from DPW that they felt that that was more than adequate. We, uh, did a walkthrough, so the entire planning board went out and spent almost an hour walking the site, looking at potential issues.
Fighting off bugs.
Fighting, fighting off a lot of bugs. And my, my, just my general feeling is it's, it's zoned properly. It's zoned for residential. So, um, that in and of itself says that for whoever established the zoning many years ago felt that that was an appropriate residential parcel which could be subdivided. So I'm more inclined to say yes on the project, so.
So do I have, uh, we, we have a motion to approve, right?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's, let's call the board.
Aye.
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 Nay.
Three to one, passes. Congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Thank you for-
Appreciate everyone's assistance.
Your patience and cooperation in this. I know it's been a struggle, but-
Yes.
Let's call a, we're going to call a ten-minute, uh-
Five minutes.
You don't need ten minutes. Ten-minute break, a five-minute break.
Five-minute break.
Okay, well, uh, let people stretch their legs and do what they need to do. Okay?
I'm sorry.
Can we sit down and restart the meeting? Thank you. We had a preliminary, uh, subdivision plan for a seven-lot subdivision called Fairway Lane on two ninety-five Maple Street. Want to read the?
Yeah, I'm making sure, two ninety-five Maple Street, this one right here. The East Long Meadow Planning Board, a hold a public hearing on July seventeenth, two thousand eighteen, at six PM in the East Long Meadow School Committee Conference Room located in the East Long Meadow High School at one eighty Maple Street, East Long Meadow, Mass, uh, to consider a request for case S D dash P, two thousand eighteen dash O three, preliminary subdivision approval for a seven-lot subdivision on four point four seven plus or minus acres located at two ninety-five Maple Street. Assessors map ID parcel six dash eleven dash zero in the residential B zoning district. Applicant Michael Caravetta, two oh two Allen Street, East Long Meadow, Mass. Uh, information relating to this application is on file for the, uh, public inspection at East Long Meadow, uh, Planning Board Office located at Town Hall, Sixty Center Square, is available for review by the public. Your regular business hour is at eight AM to four PM, Monday through Friday.
Okay. Can you introduce yourself?
Sure, sure, I've been standing up here a lot. Uh, for the record, my name is Philippe Cravo of Arlebek Associates. I am, uh, the project engineer for this, for this, uh, particular project. Um, what we have here is an application for a preliminary subdivision for a property located off of Maple Street. Um, the property is approximately four point four seven acres in size. Um, the, the existing topography of the land is such that at Maple Street, where it's about elevation two oh six, so it's an undulating topography, so we start at two oh six. We sort of move, as you move down into the site, you drop to about elevation one ninety before climbing back up to one ninety-six and then dropping back off towards the golf course. So the property runs from Maple Street all the way back to the golf course, um, in a north-south direction. And that's essentially the existing conditions. Um, there is, uh, an existing off-site wetland which the hundred-foot buffer, uh, just clips the, the edge of the property here, and, um, all of the, uh, requisite conservation filings will be made, um, when the, as we progress. Um, so to move on, and the plan's set here. Um, so what we have here, uh, if you look at the plan view, um, the color plan view is, uh, we are proposing an eight hundred fifty foot, approximately eight hundred fifty foot cul-de-sac roadway, down the length of the property to service seven lots. Um, essentially, the roadway will require, uh, will be, has been designed to sort of level off that middle undulation that goes down. At least that's what we're intending at this point. Uh, so from the high point at the roadway with Maple Street, the roadway will grade down towards the rear of the property all the way to the cul-de-sac. Um, at, the, the intent is to collect the stormwater within the roadway in a series of catch basins moving down the road and direct those to a surface basin, um, adjacent to the rear property line, which is, um, adjacent to the golf course there. And essentially, uh, we, um, we're in a residence B zone. All of the, the lot sizes, uh, have been dialed in so that we meet all of the zoning requirements. Uh, one of the parts of the application is a waiver request for the width of the right-of-way um, as part of the, um, subdivision rules and regulations. Uh, for this type of street, it's a sixty-foot wide right-of-way. Um, in order to get this, uh, property to, to have the, any usable land area on these lots, after the frontage setbacks, the side setbacks, and all of, uh, things of that, of that kind of, uh, uh, setback area, we wouldn't need that to reduce the right-of-way down to fifty feet. And, uh, that's essentially it. That's the gist of, of the, of the property. There are no on-site wetlands. Um, it's a pretty much, uh, an upland parcel and will run adjacent to the westerly property line with the roadway, and, um, the homes will be constructed along the right-hand side of the road as you drive down on the eastern side. If there's any questions, I can try and answer them at this point.
Right.
I'd like to hear the comments from DPW and some of the other, um, departments.
Russ?
Are we going to hear them now, or?
I don't think we have any.
The Department of Public Works is sending the case and middle documents for peer review to the consulting engineer.
Yeah, at this time, there's, uh, a peer review of the preliminary subdivision, because at this time, the stormwater, uh, basically, everything's conceptual and the stormwater wouldn't be fully designed until the definitive phase.
We're waiting on those, you'll be waiting for those comments.
They're still, they are, have sent them for peer review.
Yes, sir. And Kevin Ducat, building commissioner, states after review of the submitted application documents, he had no issues or concerns at that time.
John? I, I'm having a little trouble understanding, um, looking at your sheet three.
Sure, yep, that's the one.
I, I see your, your storm drainage going into the basin. I don't see where your overflow is going to be.
Right, so, this is, for, for what it is, it's, it's a conceptual layout.
Right.
Um, so the topography generally slopes towards the rear of the site. Makes sense to try and get the, all the water back there. We have done soil investigations. We've done a number of test pits along that rear property line, as well as in the middle, because there is that low depression in the middle, but just the way things are working out, it seems like all the water. It would make sense to try and get everything towards the rear. But at this point, I mean, that's, that basin is a conceptual size based on some, you know, past projects that we have. Uh, but you'd probably see an outlet structure in that basin, uh, when it's fully designed.
Okay, you, you're also showing some kind of strange plumbing right next to the basin and then coming off the individual lots. Can you explain that?
So that, so utilities, that's, that's the sanitary utility. So along the eastern property line, there's an easement that, where the sanitary sewer runs.
Okay.
And that sanitary sewer is what will provide services to each one of these lots. It's kind of a unique situation where the sanitary is behind the lots. There, it's on the, it runs along that eastern property line. So that's just there to demonstrate that, this, you know, we, we have the sanitary, um, connections.
Okay, and, and that sewer is in there already?
It is.
Okay, and that's gravity?
It is gravity.
Okay, even though you're, you're going uphill?
It's going downhill. It's downhill towards the-
Oh, it's going down towards Springfield?
Toward, towards the golf course.
Okay. And then it goes from there into Springfield?
And then it comes off the property to the south, and at that point, I'm sure it follows a number of easements. It looks like it comes, it would tie-
So it goes up to Westwood, basically?
Right, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Just trying to understand what I'm looking at.
Sure, no, that's, uh, that's a fair question.
Okay. Well, I, I think we need to wait for comments from DPW, also from police and fire, um, which we have not gotten comments on yet. So I will, would suggest that we continue the hearing?
I just want to say that this is a preliminary.
Yes.
...uh, application. It's not...
So we'll open up to the public at this point. Please give your name and address and tell us your comments.
So, Mark Macarini on the big lot at the end, so...
Okay.
Yeah. So I was just listening to Mr. Denver, uh, with the last development, say, many years ago, somebody thought it was a great idea to make this residential zone.
Yeah.
So when I bought that property, I went to the planning board department. They pulled out the blueprints, and I said, can they develop this lot? And what did they say to me? No, they can't, uh, because there's not enough frontage to put a road in. I said, what if they take that house down? No, there's not, 'cause there's not enough frontage to put the road in. So we went to the conservation meeting a couple of weeks ago, and I said, that's what I was told, and I was told that was a lie. Who told you that? So now...
Not me.
You must be amazed at my, uh, wonderment to say now we need a waiver to make it less frontage than that's required.
No, we're not, it's, it's not a frontage issue, okay?
Okay.
It, it's a road width issue. And typically, when we look at subdivisions, um, it's always a competition. The police would like a real narrow road so people will drive slowly. Fire department would like a real wide road so that they can have cars parked on both sides and in the middle and still get the trucks in. So we have to consider, uh, whether or not, um, we want to do the waiver. Part of the issue is that, um, the lots need a certain setback from, from the road, from, from the house. And then, uh, they also need a setback in the back so that they don't, um, you know, they're not in your backyard, okay? So, uh, it's an issue of how do you squeeze the road in? Now, I don't know who told you that many years ago. Uh, it's always been my policy to never tell anybody that something is unbuildable because I know that somebody's gonna figure out a way...
To do it.
...to squeeze something in there, okay? Um, it, it all depends on rules and regulations, all of which change over time.
And waivers.
Yeah. The, the only, the only way I know of to make sure somebody doesn't build on a piece of property is to buy it yourself. I mean, quite frankly, that's, the, the, people who, who own this property had a right to develop it. They have a right, assuming they meet the regulations. And, uh, you know, they have a, a, a property interest in this. They, they've been paying taxes on it for many years.
Yeah. 'Cause the kids that took over the property...
I'm sorry, I apologize for whoever told that to you, but, um, nobody should ever tell anybody that something is unbuildable.
Especially a public office shouldn't say that.
Agreed.
But, I guess...
Okay. Any other comments?
I'm just a resident, so... But that was also told to the man in the backyard who owns the dirt driveway that's trying to be purchased also. So, by the children of the family. He said, you know, we wanna develop it, but I think that they need to purchase more of that driveway to have enough, whatever you call it, street width, not frontage, but to put that in. So, I mean, the, yeah, so...
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Another comment back here? Anyone else wish to comment on this one at this time? We'll be continuing this, um, and you're welcome to come back with additional comments and questions in the future.
Are there additional copies of this, um, plan?
Yeah. Tony, can you provide copies of the plan?
You should charge a fee.
There you go. There you go.
Well, that's why we charge a fee because if you think about it, you say, well, we pay taxes, but somebody else may say, why are you using my tax dollars to give this lady a plan? So you see the double-edged sword in that argument?
No, I don't think I know.
She has an eight-and-a-half by eleven, you have a eleven by seventeen.
You can give it to her.
I will. I'll give it to you. Don't worry about it.
Okay.
There's somebody.
Okay. Take it back to the board?
Oh, we didn't close them.
Oh, please.
Hi, my name is Frank Rochella. I live in three forty-nine Westwood Avenue. Today was like a river, you know? I got it from Westwood all the way down where you eventually gonna build. That's like a river. You can go and look at it and see where the water gonna go. Because I can't do anything. You know? And never, the, the old man, who, you thought of that place, say, nobody can build over there. You gotta wait till I'm to the left of sight, but they say you got plenty room. That's not true. That's not that way, yes. It make it, the street, narrow street, why? The he not supposed to build, he not supposed to build, not because I know. He not supposed to do that. You know, that's not a way to do it. I'm there for thirty-eight years. If the old man say, you gotta get him, thank you. That's not, not possible. That's not a way to work. I'm, I'm gonna die there, but he not supposed to build that way. That way is. Because narrow over here, narrow over there, narrow, you know, that's not special this, but no. You know, you guys know, but the law, it's the law. You guys build, you give it to him, he gonna do it. That's it. But it's not a special this, no. That's not a way to do it.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Please.
Mr. Chairman, I'm just asking for...
Please identify yourself.
Ralph Page, three oh-six Prospect Street. Um, I'm just looking for a little, um, uh, information as far as I heard that this is going to a peer review. Um, exactly what are they reviewing considering this is a preliminary subdivision? That, uh, nothing is definitive, nothing is set in stone. Um, obviously, on a definitive plan, it's gonna show you all the public works, all the utilities. Um, isn't that the time that the peer review should be done to nitpick all the final and then say whether or not it's feasible? I mean, on a preliminary, this is pretty much just saying, hey, we're looking at possibly doing a development here based on this length of street. Is that something that is allowed? Um, I just, I'm still trying to grasp where the peer review comes in, where, whether the applicant or the town or whatever is paying money to review something that we, we don't have any of the information on. Thank you.
Yeah, we do have the right to go to peer review, and it's not something we've done often in the past, but I think it's not a bad idea because we're talking about six lots here that are tying directly into a sewer. That's the first question that came up on hidden ponds. This is, is the sewer big enough for that many lots? And that's something you can look at at this stage. Um, you can look at whether or not you need to do a traffic study. Where that is coming out onto Maple Street, okay, is an interesting curve, as you know. Um, the question is, is it's gonna be safe to make left turns out of there, for instance? Okay? Those are the kinds of things that we're looking for answers for, and part of that's gonna come from the police and fire, which we have not heard from yet either. So, you know, yeah.
Isn't a planning view, uh, plan, peer review require a vote of the planning board to send it to a peer review?
No. And it's D.P.W. is requesting it.
Okay. Only because I was under the understanding by reading our, uh, subdivision laws and all that the planning board would request, uh, a plan review, but...
Thank you.
David Delvecchio, I live at twenty-six Lassard Circle, right at the end of the cul-de-sac there, sort of about the property as well. I'm just curious as to, um, it's already been clear-cut, so more or less, why would somebody buy property, clear-cut it, go through all the expense without knowing that they're gonna be able to put a street in?
That's up to, um, Mr. Carabeta to decide how much he wants to spend before he gets approval.
And if it doesn't get put in afterwards, then we're just looking at dirt and dust all over the place, because...
Well, it's Mr. Carabeta's land now.
It's prerogative. Okay. Just curious as to why that happens.
Other comments from the public? Very nice, I'll take it back, but, please.
Yeah, I'm, uh, Joe LaCoppa, I live at eighteen Waterman Avenue, along the same lines as this other gentleman. Now that he removed all the trees, it changes the topography of the area. Kind of concerned about the flooding in the surrounding areas. I think, uh, one of the prior gentlemen that spoke already indicated that there's flooding in the area. Did he need approval before taking down all the trees, so to change the topography and to change the flow of water in the area?
Uh, he's, I, as I understand, he's cleared the trees. You don't need permission from the town to cut down trees on your own property.
But if I thought if you changed the topography, it changed the flow of water? You needed to bring it before the plan...
I'm not sure he's, he's changed any topography.
Well, they've already mentioned that there's flooding now that there's never been before.
He's, he's, he has not changed any of the grading on the site yet. He hasn't graded the site yet. All he's done is take down the trees. Okay? And, you know, if, if he wanted just to take down the trees and sell the wood without developing it, he's got a right to do that.
Doesn't matter what the adjoining neighbors think or care or...
It, it, it's his property. If he's, if he's damaging you now, if, if he causes damage to your property, that's another issue.
Well, I think that's what the gentleman said, now that there's flooded onto his property that I've never had before.
Well, if, if, if he's causing damages to somebody else's property, then that's something for, you know, for the courts to take care of.
Okay. Thank you.
Other comments or questions on this one? Take it back to the board. Any specific questions that you have for the applicant that we'd like to get answered before, at, at the continuation of this? None? Okay. Do I have a motion to continue this to, uh...
Can I just ask a question? As far as the peer review goes, it's just that, there's not a, a lot of information here as far as information to peer review. Uh, typically, in past projects, traffic studies, police departments, fire, um, review has all occurred during the definitive phase. So to send it out to peer review at a preliminary phase, knowing that this is essentially a conceptual design, um, just seems a little bit early.
Well, that's something to discuss with plant, with the D.P.W. as to why they want that at this point. Do I have a motion to continue?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Tell people when it's gonna be.
It's gonna be the twenty-first of August, and I can't tell you the exact time. It'll be scheduled for six. It'll be when we get to it.
Did you invite people to the August seventh? First public outreach for the master plan. If you want to help shape the community, we urge you to come to National Night Out to be held at the grounds of the Eastland Meadow High School. We're gonna be presenting, starting to talk with folks about the master plan and also the open space plan. So please come on by and help shape where you want your town to go.
Okay. Do we have, um... You have two administrative matters you wanted to discuss, Connie? And we have minutes.
So, your minutes? Yeah. Did you commit?
Let's do the minutes first. Do we have, um, we have the, the minutes from July ninth? Does anyone have any changes or amendments? I like this, just three pages. Two and a half, actually. Have a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. You have two things on your mind?
Yeah, just, uh... In regard to the release of subdivision performance security, or performance security, I should say, which could include bond, cash surety, covenant, um, there is, um, going to be no more partial release of bonds, of surety. Under your, under your subdivision regulations, the operative word is "may", so we're exercising the right to retain all of the subdivision, um, performance guarantees until you all authorize the release. So that is some, um, a process.
What's the reasoning behind that change?
Some of our developers failed to complete those final tasks, and it impacts the budget of the Department of Public Works. So it may be five thousand dollars here, five thousand dollars there. Well, before you know it, you have fifty thousand dollars' worth of work that hasn't been completed. So in order to, um, in order to, uh, keep the town on track as far as managing their, their appropriations and expenditures and costs, we are going to, um, make sure that our developers keep their promise to complete their project.
How does this affect people that are currently involved, or does this go into effect at...
It went into effect July first, yes.
Basically, in the past, what we've done is, as the road goes in, for instance, at certain stages, we would release a portion of the bond based on the percentage completion. However, um, D.P.W. has been finding that in cases where it isn't totally completed or was incomplete, completed incorrectly, the amount that's left is often not sufficient to finish the project. And part of that has to do with differences in cost for the town doing it versus the developer doing it. One of the things the town does, it get, unless D.P.W. does it, you pay prevailing wages of the whole thing. It just gets more expensive. So, um, they're getting much more leery about releasing stuff because we, we end up paying for it in the end. And then you had the thing on sidewalks to nowhere.
So the D.P.W., again, would like to be able to complete the sidewalks along the arterial roads before they see, um, the creation or the construction of sidewalks to nowhere. We get a little bit of pushback sometimes in regard to completing subdivision sidewalks that don't lead, um, that lead us to the end of a walkway. So they're, they're hoping to establish an in lieu fund so that in the event that a smaller subdivision was being presented, the planning, it would be under the planning board's, uh, still the planning board's authority to accept the in lieu funds and, and, and take the money that might be a portion for the cost of sidewalk construction and then put it into this, this, um, dedicated fund so that when the D.P.W. was moving forward on insta, installation of sidewalks on a, on an area that has a little more pedestrian use, then they would take that money that's been set aside and use it to pay for the sidewalk construction.
So I have two comments on that. One, um, I would like to leave that up to the developer if they wish to. Do they have to come in and ask for a waiver? One. And then, two, before I would vote on that, I would like to get a statement from the school department on what their habits are with respect to picking up kids. So, you know, do they stop at the end of the, do they go down the street? Do they stop at the end of the street? Is there a sidewalk at the end of their proposed subdivision where kids can stand? I mean, so I think we would need a little direction from them as well...
Okay.
Before I'm, the habit, before I would vote on something like that.
So you would continue to, um, keep the ordinance, or excuse me, the bylaw as it stands, but you were to have the applicant developer ask for a waiver and also, um, acquire a, a statement from the school department so that you, as a board, would have a better understanding as to the need for these sidewalks per subdivision? So it wouldn't just be...
Overall.
Overall. Okay. That sounds fair. Thank you. I'll take that back to administration.
And I, I would not object to having the ability to do that, but I wanna go on record as saying in general, I prefer that the sidewalks be put in when the subdivision goes in because it's cheaper to do it while they're constructing. And so, developer is gonna give us money in lieu of sidewalk equivalent to what it would cost a developer to put the sidewalk in. The town's gonna pay more than that per foot, so we're gonna be getting less length of sidewalk overall, in my opinion, than if the actual sidewalk went into the subdivision. So, it's a balance.
Yeah. My counter to that would be that the sidewalk plan is to do, as she mentioned, more arterial streets to reduce the busing cost overall, which have just grown dramatically, being on appropriations for so long. I can see how, so, yeah, it's a, it's a good balancing.
Yeah.
And my counter to that is raise the price of what we're asking a developer to pay for the sidewalks because we're not charging enough. Then that's our problem.
Effectively.
And so maybe we should get a, a quote from, from D.P.W. as part of it.
Okay.
So the developer might say, it's gonna cost this, but D.P.W. says, well, it's really gonna cost that.
Should be whatever the D.P.W.'s cost is.
Yeah.
Usually, you don't get those figures until you go to, you reach the point where you're asking for...
Bits.
When the applicant comes back for the endorsement?
But they do it at least every other year.
And that's actually really, it's a good point because you could ask for that as...
As a comparison.
Yeah.
Yeah. I hope we could get that from D.P.W. I, I, I'm not gonna go there.
So we don't vote on these matters?
No, these are just...
Yeah.
Trying to get feedback from you all so that as we move forward, um, we have your input.
Unless Connie has, has asked you folks, she is setting up a booth at the, uh, National Night Out, and she would like us to be there to, so... Night Out, and she would like us to be there to, so the people in town can meet us, not necessarily adversarially, and talk about the...
How do you know?
Talk about the master plan, okay? So, and hopefully by then, we'll have something to present for master plan.
Yeah, I'm working at it.
Okay.
And we will have, we should have a tent so that you're not in the sun.
Good. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. We're adjourning at 7:37.